All right.
Okay.
Here we go. It is seven twenty-five. Call this meeting to order. Regular Board of Finance. Meeting for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We have a motion to approve the minutes from our last regular meeting of April twenty-fifth.
So move.
There was one small typo. Sorry, Julie, let me just.
Ty, that's okay.
Yeah, it was. It was just the, oh, thank you. Get my phone. Um.
This is public area, you want to move up to the other page?
Uh, no, I think it, no. Sorry, I didn't print it out and notated on my. Yeah, we can go to the next page. Okay, I can't read.
There we go. Pull it down.
Okay, thank you. No, I can't see it. It was actually the tense of a word. I apologize for not printing it out and. You could go back to the prior page, please. Thank you. Oh, okay. Public comment. The fourth paragraph. One, two, three, I'm sorry, third paragraph. The third line and the Board of Finance didn't feel it was enough of a raise.
Wow. There you go.
Okay. That was worth it. Excellent.
Sorry, it took me so long.
Is there anything else? Okay, wait a second. Paul.
So moved.
Yeah, Paul made a first.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, Holly, second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Carrie's it. First order of business is the mill rate. I got some numbers here. Everybody wants to jot them down. It revolves three or around our. Current unassigned fund balance, which currently is at three million. Four sixty-three, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. One month of current operating expense is nine hundred and seventy-four. Thousand, two hundred and four dollars. State would like us to be around three months. So that would bring. The total to two million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. That state guidelines suggests that we keep in reserves, which I think, personally, I think it's a good idea. Yeah, most of us feel as, or all of us, if not all of us feel the same way. So doing the math. If we, if we were on agreement of having three months in reserve, that leaves. And it. Available, I don't know if that's the right word, five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. To maintain a healthy three months in reserve. So if we look across the top of the page. Current mill rate is fifteen-four. But that would be with a three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred dollar buy down. We go over to the fifteen-three, it would be about a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar buy down. Fifteen point two-five is about four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar buy down. Uh, we, we set a tentative mill rate of fifteen point two-five at the last meeting. Is everybody still comfortable with that?
Yes.
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 In that, okay, great. So do we have a motion to set the mill rate? Fifteen point two-five with a buy down. Of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars from the unassigned fund balance.
So moved.
Second.
This discussion. Paul in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Unanimous? Next is.
Great job, team, by the way. Lots of months of.
Giving stuff, everybody.
Give yourself. I just don't want to just go to the next thing on the budget. Well done, all, there was a lot of great feedback and input. You guys rock. I'm not part of the. I'll be over here.
Um, so next on the list is the suspension list, which I. Pass off. The holiday design.
Oh, we have to sign it?
You have, you have to sign it. Secretary.
Oh. I forgot.
Want to give it to me, or you can either bring it back tomorrow and give it to Kim Quikka, or give it to me and I can give it there tomorrow.
Okay, I will, um, this today is the seventeenth. Um. Where exactly do I sign? Order finance of the town of Bucksbury, bye, okay.
You should actual collection report today.
It was. I know of this, I, if you want to talk about this, I think that's amazing. That's probably the best. Election rate. That is kind of quite the win, so definitely cover that.
Yeah, I'm looking at these charts now, it's broken down into real estate, personal property and, and.
Auto.
Go back, yeah. So the motor vehicle. But I'm not seeing the overall, which I believe was above ninety-nine percent.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it is on there. Scan to that other sheet. So where you're going to see that is, uh, right now, real estate is at ninety-nine point six-six percent. Personal property, motor vehicle, so right now, out of ten million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, we're only missing forty-five thousand. Which is.
Amazing.
Pretty amazing. And with some of those, you know, people die, you're not going to collect that, there's a certain amount of that that's actually built in, so the fact that it ended up like that is.
A question, why there are two motor vehicle wise?
Uh, I don't know why that's.
Can we back to prior pages? Motor vehicle, motor vehicle.
Yep. So I'm not seeing the. Percentage.
Uh, well, I mean, yeah, the total. Actually, is it on that other sheet?
Personal property, motor vehicle, regular motor vehicles.
No, there is no total of that.
As of April fifth, we were at ninety-nine point two.
Total.
As of April.
Yeah, total. Most of it's in real estate. And I will say the grand list went up, uh, just this year, sixteen million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand.
And, and what Kim's saying here, uh, the last. Four years, the average was ninety-eight point three. For the overall, overall.
We're actually not even allowed to project anywhere near that because it's so unheard of.
Yeah. Real estate.
Doing a great job.
Correct.
What was, the, the grand list went up sixteen?
Sixteen, sixteen million, seven seventy-four, three sixty.
On what? On a base of what?
That's the whole grand list.
Sixteen million.
It went from, uh.
What was it?
Six million, six hundred and seventy-five million to six hundred and ninety-two.
Two houses, building.
Yes, everything, yeah, building, anything that was added on to or that had a building permit to it or.
Six, so.
So the, yeah, what's the delta, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, the delta, difference between last year and.
Sixteen million, seven seventy-four.
Sixteen, seven seventy-four, and what was it last year, fifteen, sixteen?
No, it was, uh, six hundred and seventy-five million. In two thousand and twenty.
Six hundred and seventy-five million.
The grand list.
So, okay, six, seven, so the, the delta is sixteen million?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well.
On sixteen, on six.
The total is six ninety-two right now.
Six ninety-two.
Jimmy, do you have any perspective on a non-revaluation year? Where that would stand? Not the, the amount, sixteen million.
That's a huge increase.
Here you go, it's last year.
Oh.
This was a huge result.
All right, there it is.
Yeah.
So that's, that's.
There's a, thank you. Let alone all the acquisitions, the sale acquisitions, that they're still at a lower value, so we are going to see. Large increase. In our grand list, but then next year it's going to be important to keep our budget just tight so we can keep things.
Right, yeah.
Proportionate.
Wonderful.
So it's great, next year is going to be a lot more fun, we're going to be very accountable to where that number stands.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, the school has a lot to do with that as well.
Any more discussion on the collection report? John, like John's.
I'm just playing around with something. It's not right. Maybe if one. Difference is sixteen, seventy-four. On the basis of six seventy-five. Three ninety-one, three ninety-two, three ninety-two. No, two and a half percent. Prices wouldn't have more than two and a half percent.
But I think, isn't there a lag? But what you're doing, so, I don't know if you guys know this in the state of Connecticut, but if a house sells, the assessment doesn't go up. They don't reassess it at the time of sale, so. It goes, a sale, if a, if a ranch that was assessed at three hundred and, three hundred thousand, and then it sells for a million. Now on that revaluation, it all catches up to date with all those sales.
Right.
In Connecticut, where we have a, a law is, uh, we can't chase the sale. In some states like California, right, when you close it, they literally will reassess you.
So when do we, when do we recognize that?
Next year.
Next year, right?
Correct.
When there's a, so when there's a revaluation.
Next year, yeah, so they've already started that process now, so we're going to see that in next year's budget.
Which should be a dramatic increase.
It's going to be a dramatic increase, and that's where I was just saying to Ed that it's going to be important that we keep our numbers the same, so that we can show that we're, you know, we have a flat budget. And then we see where the mill rate stands based on the increase, the grand list.
Right, that sixteen million is just new construction, pools, houses.
From last year.
Yeah, that's just.
Through, through October of last year. Or through June of last year.
Through October of last year.
October of last year. Right.
From the previous.
From the previous October. It still isn't much.
So last, so last month, they started with, you know, that evaluation process has already started. That was already budgeted in capital expense for that company.
What happens with, um, undeveloped property, then a house goes up on it? How, how are taxes?
That's a new sale, so that would be.
Oh, that would be.
That's a, a new house, so you're going to have building permits and things, you're going to have a contractor, they're going to get those, so those come up to date.
Okay.
Some just, you know, increase generally.
And if I understand correctly, it's sometime in October.
That's when, yeah, that's what it's called, going to come to an end.
So if you're halfway done with a house, a million dollar house at that point. It's my assumption that they didn't assess it at half of that.
If it's under construction, that's kind of a sticky thing of where that sits.
There's like a guy.
Yeah.
Drywall is this percentage or it's just. This percentage. As of October first.
October first, okay.
Don't finish anything. Caution tape around it, Ed, but.
Um, any more discussion on the collection report? Nanette?
No.
Okay, uh, next order of business, the auditor appointment. We've been using Charles Habernan? Haberman? Havens, excuse me. Havens.
H E A V.
Heaven.
Evans.
Evans. What I'm looking for, I'm sorry, I'm like, what happened to my agenda?
For a number, for a number of years, I think we've all been pretty happy with. With their performance, Rico. All right, John, you have any, any comments?
No.
You, you okay with really firing them?
What's, what is their, uh, their charges? They, they went up last year, I know, but not that much. So we're going to hire them. Do we have, are we under any obligation to put out a bid, or?
No, we can continue going, like, we do this every year, we've done this on board finance before. We're just kind of continuing with them, because we had no reason to question them, and they're still affordable and they're a great partner.
I think his daughter's. Moving in, like, taking over, she's, yeah, I thought she's done a really good job.
Yeah, and Rico is available all the time, and I mean, he's good with guidance, we, when we were going through the, you know, audit process, he was here pulling out receipts, pulling out books, and. I mean, he does a nice thorough job of it, and I know he's well respected in the industry, uh, as a company, as Rico himself. They've been doing it for what, thirty years or something to that effect, it's been a long time.
Remember, we've gone out to bid in the past with, and it was, uh.
Last year, wasn't it?
Um, it was, excuse me?
Two years. Last year we went out to bid, or the year before?
Year before, I think.
Companies from New Hampshire somewhere, you know, they weren't, they were at a state by a couple of states, and I was like, yeah, we really, we want to have somebody that's.
Somebody local. There is, and it's, there's more than that, I think, I think there's a value in having somebody look at the same things every year, it just becomes easier, and they're, they can speak to some of our long-term goals. You know, we don't have to explain everything every time, because it's, there's, we have a long history with them, so I think that adds value.
But, well, but there's also a risk to that, too.
Correct, correct.
There's definitely a risk if, if an order gets a little too comfortable, right? But if, if the pool is not there, especially someone who's multiple states away, et cetera. And we've done due diligence in seeking out. Alternatives, um, that I'm comfortable using the same people.
Okay.
I think we also asked them, um, at one point, if they could switch audit partners, because that's another thing that, um, sometimes is done. And I, I, I can't remember whether there weren't enough people for them to do it, or, um, but Rico stayed on as the audit partner.
Would you be okay with retaining them again?
Yeah, yeah.
Paul, Paul.
I'm fine, yes. He's really happy about it, like, yeah, good.
You got it.
You got it, yeah.
Uh, so do we, we have a motion to, um.
So move forward. Second.
Second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need? Do we need a cost in that motion?
No.
Okay.
I'm being told no.
No.
Yeah, you're, you're hiring him for next fiscal year.
Um, Patrick, for selectmen's report.
Excellent, well, it is, now that we have a past budget, thank you, everybody, that was great, now we can start working on some of these, uh, capital expenses. We are planning to start, uh, the bridge on Davenport at one ninety-nine, uh, right after school ends, it's going to start on June seventeenth. NJR Associates is going to be putting that together for us, uh, under the oversight of Cardinal. And then Squire Road, I'm having drawings put together, uh, we're actually switching that corner up, so it's, uh, not an island, it's going to be a little bit more of a T. Reduce the size of the culverts a little bit, bigger than what is there now, but not quite as big as they first, uh, designed. But I'm pretty proud of Public Works, we actually had a meeting where we got everybody together with the engineers, uh, to work out how we're going to make these things happen, and. Made sure everybody felt comfortable with the whole project before we start, uh, that's going to be done probably in July into August, uh, based on how quickly we can get, uh, supplies for it. Um, I get to work on the North Street lot, which is kind of nice, um, that's going to start with, uh, uh, independent property appraisal, uh, so we can get an independent eye, uh, so we can use, uh, as a, a backup on it. Truck number eight just went out for its, uh, rebuild, so that Mack truck, great, went to, uh, Truck Builders of Connecticut, uh, Kim Pelletier, I'm very, very excited with that. Another capital expense, the, uh, the town hall kitchen is going to get ripped out in the beginning of June, it's been a long time in the way in. And, uh, loader number two, our transfer station, uh, loader, we're starting to get the parts in for that as well, um, so we can start rebuilding that also. So there's a lot of stuff going on, I'm pretty excited about it, um, chip ceilings going down, we did some, uh, we have more coming up. Still holding off on some paving, paving, because the price is just astronomical, we're not getting a lot of bank for our buck. But I'm enjoying this whole process with the board of finance and, uh, look forward to a great summer of projects. Can't wait to go dirty, honestly.
We'll be the right there with you, Ben.
Yep, absolutely.
Dirt on my road, oh my god, I was.
That schoolhouse got wiped out.
Yeah.
It rained.
Yeah. But I, I was pinned in.
I mean, there was like this much you could drive on, and the rest was.
Yeah.
Your guys got there right away.
Yeah, they were dumping a lot of, a lot of stone today, there was a lot of repairs, um, not just that storm, but the other storm the other day.
Yeah.
Well, that steamroll would really help.
I know, I know.
Yes, it will.
Do you have any idea how long it'll take?
Well, with all of this, you know, and, and all these things, um, I'm basically waiting for July first.
Before you.
Before anything's really going to happen too much, um, we're going to start looking at it, if there's a good deal comes along, but, um, right now, just about the used market is, is just, it's so inflated. We're starting to see it slow off a little bit, uh, because I think, you know, just, we had reached a, a plateau, and now, being in a unstable economy, I think people are starting to pull back a little bit, we get a little bit more hesitant, so the prices are going to start coming down. I, I mean, I'm hoping we can do something this year, but if it had to be next year, that's fine, now that it's in the funds, we can do that. And, uh, you know, a little bit of the maintenance, I think they've been doing a pretty good job with the maintenance, uh, we're also ordered calcium to put on the roads to keep the dust down, uh, so we're starting with, uh, Flag, East Flag. Mallory. I guess it's not Mallory, because it says Pave Garden, uh, and River Road, and then we're going to hit up on, uh, Judd's Bridge, and then head over towards the schoolhouse, uh, probably in the next couple of weeks.
This is a liquid calcium?
It's war. It's, uh, it is, it's something that they put down on it, I don't know, I've never seen the process before, uh, but it's supposed to help, so more, more care to the roads.
Yeah.
Those bones.
Yes, correct.
Don't wash your car anytime soon.
Yeah.
I, I definitely notice the difference, living on a dirt road, when it's.
Yeah, when they do that, yeah.
And it keeps it all down, so it actually will keep your car cleaner.
Yeah, that's, that's actually the point. Keep the dust off, yeah, and it holds into the place.
Modify my budget now, yeah.
My excuse as to why I did wash.
But once these can get compacted down, that will definitely hold the roads for. And then it's a, a question of, uh, a lot of erosion, and then just ditches, culverts, they got to be cleaned out and rebuild and.
We'd need drainage, for sure.
Next year, we're going up to, uh, about a vacant road, because there's so many culverts, and they just kind of direct the lifespan of it. And so there'll be, there'll be more projects coming up.
Wellness is much better, you guys did a great job on that, and I noticed two big new drains have gone in, but there is one missing.
Yeah. That's a whole nother story, but yeah.
Yeah. Well, we get to that.
Some residency to benefit, some don't.
Yeah.
Sorry to say, but yeah, they're doing a great job. Uh, and, uh, continuing to work, I was out with, uh, Stanley Tree, uh, today, uh, earmarking trees, you know, here and there, and again, still, still.
Did anybody lose power yesterday, last night?
No.
The storm?
No.
Wow.
Only doubt was rain, southern end of town.
Yeah, there wasn't that, it, it wasn't that much, I think it was worse the other day.
Really hard.
Didn't get on a lift.
But that's good, but overall, we've, we've done pretty good, we've done pretty good power launches, so we're going to continue to work on that, but there's, there's not a road in town that you can't find, but a couple of trees that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely true.
Okay, and that's all I got.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um. So moving on to other business, um. I don't know. How you all feel about discussing, uh, the process of. Identifying and. A new board member. You guys want to talk about that tonight, do you want to wait?
I think we can wait. I think I have deference to what happened.
Okay.
I think it would be good, I would say that I think we should follow the same process we did last time, I thought that was efficient.
I do, too.
And fair.
And.
And.
I'm not sure we need to do it again. We had a couple of really strong candidates in that process, and I don't know why we can't go back to those candidates and think of, and, and, and. Consider that.
Well, I think that, to be fair, that I think other candidates, um, have emerged. So I think we, we really have to be, um. Fair to all of those who now have expressed an interest, so.
I agree, Nanette, I've had two people reach out to me directly.
Wow.
Uh, in addition to, from, from the previous.
Past, yeah, the last round.
Have we, uh, how we've, uh, announced this opening?
We haven't done anything.
We haven't, uh, nothing in the blast going out about, uh, anyone interested in going to finance?
We literally held back, um, just out of respect. We didn't want to just put it out there, so when you tell me what you want to start that process, we will, uh, but that's, you're going to be your decision.
Right. Are we having a June meeting?
If there's business, I don't know.
Otherwise, we could have another interim, maybe just before Memorial Day? Or that's too soon, maybe right after Memorial Day, first week of June.
What's next meeting? Between twenty-first. Be the next scheduled meeting.
Time.
So how do, how does everybody feel about?
Well, we haven't announced that we, we have an opening, actually. Solicited interest.
So maybe we should wait at least another month.
Well, if you do that, then you have to wait, then.
Wait for it another month, so maybe we put the notice out? Do you want to?
People feel like that, you know.
Nanette, what are your thoughts?
No, I think that's fine, I think we should go ahead and put the notice out and see what we get, and, um. I guess, um, probably we have to tell the people who applied last time that they need to apply again if they're still interested.
I think that sounds about right.
I think so, just good housekeeping.
So Patrick, you, you please put that on there?
I'm going to put it out on the email, and if I can get the names of the original candidates, because I don't think I was part of that process, I don't want to miss anybody.
Do you have?
I have, have it, and I, I was in correspondence with them.
As long as you guys don't mind, I'll, I'll personally reach out to each person, thank them for their interest, and, and let them know that they'll, that I'll pass, pass the names of everyone interested on to Ed.
I, I can, I can forward you those names.
If you don't mind.
It's not a problem.
Perfect.
Except for the one who didn't show up.
Oh.
Really?
True, good point.
That is true.
Okay.
Good point.
Earmark that person across them off the list, great call, Nanette.
I just asked, you put it in the email last, you want, you want Patrick to give the pointers, people call.
We can leave the selectmen's office.
Number, whoever.
It's, it's up to you guys, I'll, I'll be happy, Jimmy, I'd be happy to field it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, up to you. Yeah, we've been, we've been doing the other boards through the selectmen's office, and we put the names to you guys, so.
Actually, Jimmy, it all might make a bit more sense, just so the whole town doesn't have my email.
That's why we're. That's why we're, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Why don't we go through Patrick if that's okay with you?
It's worked out. It's, I, I highly advise it. And then you just forward it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And then I'll get the confirmations for people that would want to reapply. So I'll do that at the same time. So it'll all be done tomorrow. We do have a blast going out tomorrow because we're housing and some other things that need to be posted this week.
Paul, are you suggesting that we do it on Zillow with those individuals since we have a super new computer?
I.
As opposed to having everybody in.
I mean, on Zoom?
On Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
I, yeah, just, you know, but you, you let them in.
I.
And they don't realize, I guess.
Had worked it out where we were able to stagger and give appointment times and it worked very well.
Yeah. So I think it'd be good if we came together.
Yes, absolutely.
Just to give the option of the scholarship, just have their interviews, like scholarship, some are person, some are student. I'm just set up.
Great. So do you want to sit with the 10 minute format with a, was it three minutes or five minutes in between?
Um, it was like two minutes.
Two minutes.
Yeah, just not even, just to keep switching.
And then, but was it a 10 minute interview or five minutes?
I think there were.
You gave them 10.
You, you were allowed to have an opening statement.
Right.
And then opening up to the asked questions, questions posed.
Nanette, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I think what will happen though, that happened last time, is people will have questions before they want to apply. And so you might still, you might have to respond to some of those questions, Ed, even though they're not going to come directly to you.
Some of the questions, Nanette, I might be able to answer if we field them through the selectmen's office. Because as, you know, being passed on the board of finance, as well as my assistant, was also served on the board of finance.
And the information is posted on our website. If they want to review budgets and read through minutes.
Yeah.
That's, that.
That's a good resource, yeah.
Yeah.
If you guys are okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do you think we need a motion for this or we're just having a casual conversation?
I, yeah.
Okay. So can we have a motion to? Have Patrick put his next blast email, request for, for anybody that might be interested in filling the vacant board finance seat?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous?
Yes.
And then, um, anything else anybody wants to talk about?
Just want to suggest that we monitor carefully the upy chow line item. Seriousness. I mean, this could, you know, that dog eats.
Especially if she gets bigger.
I will say I've bought very little for that dog. Everyone brings her something. Everyone's bringing her something. So the only thing I have to buy is the outfit for Memorial Day, which I have yet to determine.
No flags. No flags.
No flags. No. No, it can be stars though, maybe.
Yep.
Or something. Okay.
Something.
And then did we want to discuss chairman, vice chairman moving forward? Do you want to wait on that? I don't think there's any rush.
I think we can. Push that to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, let's have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so do you need a motion to adjourn, my friend? Please. I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
In favor? Aye.
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 Okay, all righty. Good to see everybody.
Thanks.
Good night, Nanette. Good night, Nanette.
Good night.
Wow, it's eight o'clock on the nose.
Gee whiz.
You mean, one hour.
Wow, efficiency.
Skewer.